Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee meeting of December 19th, 2018. We are going to begin this evening with a moment of silence in memory of Christopher Roy, a Shrewsbury resident and Worcester firefighter who lost his life in the line of duty earlier this month. Firefighter Roy's daughter Ava is a student of ours in Shrewsbury Public Schools. Please join me in a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting on January 9th, 2019. It will also be available for viewing on SMC's website. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee at the top of each regular committee meeting. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in addressing the committee. Those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting and you will be recognized for up to three minutes. The next item on our agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. I'll first recognize Mrs. Consano.
Thank you. I would just like to inform the committee and the community that I have decided not to run for a fifth term. It was a bittersweet decision, but I feel it's the right time in my life to step down. Obviously, I look forward to continuing to work with everyone until my term ends in May. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Consano. Bittersweet indeed. Obviously, we look forward to finishing out the next four months of your term and I'm sure we'll all have quite a bit to say about your long and successful tenure at that time.
Thank you.
Members, anything further? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Palich. A few pieces I'd like to report on to the committee and to the community. First off, in reference to firefighter Roy and his tragic passing, we were particularly proud and touched by the response by our members of our staff and students at Coolidge School, or his daughter Ava the Tens, as well as all of our faculty and staff and students and families across the district. The Coolidge School handled the situation in, I thought, was a remarkably skillful and sensitive way and also developed a wonderful tribute and fundraiser that the district participated in on Friday. And as I reported out to the community, our nine public schools, along with the staff here and the municipal government for the town, as well as Selco, put together, raised over $50,000 for the Ava Roy Fund, which I thought was quite remarkable. Again, another example of what a wonderful community we live in. Obviously, we'll continue to find ways to support Ava and her family as we go forward. I also would like to report that in terms of several successes that we're also very proud of. First off, I had the opportunity to attend many of the seasonal concerts that our Performing Arts Department put on, which were outstanding, as well as the recent Sherwood Musical and really just top-notch performances across the board. Also wanted to congratulate, I had the opportunity to visit a variety of schools yesterday to award, along with Chris Chutten, the co-president of the Shrewsbury Education Foundation, and Mark Adler, their treasurer, the annual awards that SEF gives out. The, we're able to give, for the first time, the SEF is giving something called, they call the Impact Award, and that is being given to Assistant Superintendent Amy Clouder, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services Meg Belcito, and Beal Principal Chris Girardi as in tribute to the extraordinary work they did on the education plan for the new Beal School. Also, we awarded the John Collins Awards for Excellence. Very pleased that the following people were recognized in the professional educator category: Megan DeLeon, who's a special education team chair and teacher at Sherwood Middle School; Kathy Floyd, who's a school counselor at Shrewsbury High School; Mario Gonzalez, who's a special education teacher at Shrewsbury High School; and Maggie Corab, who is the television production teacher at Shrewsbury High School. In the paraprofessional category, Lisa Eason and Jody Kucher, who are both paraprofessionals at Sherwood Middle School, will be recognized. In the support staff category, it's a mother and daughter team, Tracy Snow and Brianna Snow, who are the bus driver and bus monitor on one of our buses that's provided to us for AA transportation. They were actually nominated by the team at Parker Road Preschool, and Mrs. Lisa Robinson, the principal there. In the unsung hero category, Wolf Gerhardt, who is a volunteer, he's a grandparent at Spring Street School, does quite a bit of volunteer tutoring work at that school, he also serves on the school council there. And in the leadership category, Shelley Hoy, who is the instructional coach, curriculum coordinator, one of them, at Floral Street School, for her ongoing exceptional leadership work there. Very, very pleased that SEF continues to find ways to recognize and honor outstanding educators and support staff across the district, and we'll look forward to honoring them at the SEF Dinner, which will happen in January. In addition, one final piece is that Mrs. Clouder did some excellent work to apply for a state-level grant for something known as the Systemic Student Support Academy, which was right, very well aligned with some of our strategic goals around reducing achievement gaps, particularly in the area of literacy this was targeted at. And it required teams from three different schools within our district to participate in some very rigorous professional development, which has already begun with an initial meeting that's being provided to the Rennie Center, the Boston College and School of Education. And wanted to thank and congratulate Tiffany Ostrander, Erin Kendrick, and Maureen Henry from, who are representing Coolidge School, Gina Kelly, the assistant principal Tara Plord, and Shelley Hoy, again, from Floral Street School, and Jane Lazzot, Lisa Daley, and Patty Waterhouse from Sherwood Middle School, along with Amy participating in this important work, and we'll hope to have an update for you at some point around how that goes. So, lots of great things happening in the district, and that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a timed scheduled appointment with the SHS Student Advisory Committee. Massachusetts school districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC meets with the school committee several times per year to review various items of concern and interest to the student body. Their most recent report to us is enclosed, and welcome if you guys want to come on up. And if you'll begin, as always, by just going down the line and introducing yourselves for our viewing audience.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Prisha Singh, and I'm here with the rest of SAC, and we're excited to share our agenda with you tonight. Now, we'll go down the line and introduce ourselves. Again, I'm Prisha, and I'm a senior.
My name's Polina Scosse, I'm a senior.
My name's Erica Hanlon, I'm also a senior.
My name's Sophia Pang, and I'm a G.
Something that might be running through your mind right now is the absence of our fifth member, Max Evers.
We're happy to inform you that he is in fact himself running for SHS right now in a track meet.
So, fittingly, the first item on our agenda this evening is extracurriculars. Students at SHS continue to both excel under extracurriculars and show support for their classmates. SHS teams have a history of performing well in the playoffs, and the students this year certainly didn't disappoint. Volleyball and cross-country both made it to the district matches this year, and boys' soccer and field hockey were right there as well and advanced to the district playoffs. The cheerleading team reached the state competition, and last but certainly not least, football won their district in the Central Massachusetts Championship to cap off another great season for our program.
While, of course, this time of year sees the end of many fall sport programs, the winter season has already begun. Students have signed up and tried out for their favorite winter sports and are excited to follow the precedent of success in sports such as hockey, indoor track, and gymnastics. Overall, there's a lot to look forward to at SHS in the coming months.
On the arts side of things, SHS had its annual fall play on November 2nd and 3rd. StuCo kept track of the amount of each grade in attendance, and it was a class cup event. There was a great turnout to see the amazing show, and as always with the SHS Theater Department, our town proved to be a great production with over 30 people involved. Two weeks ago, we also had a great turnout at the two winter concerts for the music department, with some awesome holiday music that got everyone into the winter spirit. Outside of the Sea Wing, SHS also participated in a Federal One Credit Union Arts Show, with some impressive student work featured. It is truly marvelous to see the variety of arts activities SHS students are participating in.
The Unified Basketball Team at Shrewsbury High School just rocked up their season with a successful record of four wins and three losses. Unified Basketball is an inclusive team that provides the opportunity for students with intellectual disabilities and those without to be on an athletic team together. There were 38 girls and boys on the team this past season. SHS students have made a fantastic fan section this year and have consistently shown their support and spirit at every game.
On Friday, November 30th, the Class of 2020 hosted their class fundraiser, the Annual Hypnotist Show. It was a fun experience for all, and we are grateful to SHS graduate Dan Candell for continuing to support us through his performances. The junior class sold 194 tickets, and though proceeds were not as high as they would have liked, the money made will be useful for prom and senior events in the future.
The second item on our agenda is United School Service.
The SHS community continually displays its generosity and collaborative spirit as it gives back through a variety of drives and fundraisers. For their second community service drive of the year, the Service Learning Advisory Board, or SLAB, ran a book drive, collecting new books and monetary donations for students at Belmont Street Community School. SHS choirs impressively raised over $900 for the drive, and other groups such as the GSA and National Latin Honor Society also contributed. SLAB, Helping Hands, StuCo, and the Black History Community all visited Belmont last week to deliver the gifts and bond with the students. It was amazing to see every Belmont second grader receiving a gift for the holiday season.
In the spirit of giving thanks and giving back, SHS rallied together to hold our annual Thanksgiving Drive, this year focusing on providing supplies as they are in higher demand at St. Anne's. The supply drive took place during the week of November 12th to 20th and was contributed to with vigor. Ultimately, the school donated 2,399 supplies to St. Anne's with an additional $670 in monetary and gift donations. The Class of 2019 donated the most supplies and won this class cup event.
Throughout the week of October 22nd to 26th, SHS students also participated in the Coins for a Cure fundraiser. The seniors raised the most money, contributing $1,150 to the total raised, which came out to be a whopping $5,057. The proceedings were donated to the nonprofit organization Metaviver to aid in raising awareness and researching breast cancer.
On a quick side note, an item that emerged since we published our agenda was the Red for Roy's effort that occurred last Friday. To show support for the Roy family following the recent tragedy, an overwhelming number of SHS students wore red, and $11,000 were raised from students and faculty. SHS pulled together to help our community and displayed our generosity and caring.
The third and final item on our agenda this evening is improving student life.
SHS students have recently engaged in activities reflecting our democratic traditions while also learning to vocalize and advocate for our interests and opinions. On October 15th, students involved in Shrewsbury High School's TV production class, newspaper, student advisory committee, and student council were invited to learn about how politics are covered today at the national and local level. C-Span shared their high-tech best with us, where students were able to interact with the technology and listen to speakers about the network itself. We appreciated this unique opportunity to learn about politics and the media today.
Quarter one grades closed on October 31st. We are very proud of the 1,270 students that made the honor roll during this quarter. A fun incentive for students to work their hardest is that by being the class with the most students on honor roll, they can earn points for the annual class cup competition. At the end of quarter one, there were 343 students from the freshman class, 313 from the sophomore class, 317 from the junior class, and 297 from the senior class that made the honor roll. We are anticipating a continuation of school-wide academic success in the upcoming quarter.
SHS held its annual town meeting run by student council and Mr. Bizidlo on November 20th. These are some of the questions asked and responses given at the meeting. One question that was raised concerned the lack of a wrestling team at SHS. There was some passion displayed for the sport at the meeting, but as Mr. Bizidlo explained to the student, the feasibility of having an SHS wrestling team is limited by the space, equipment, and time constraints, as there are already several teams that have to compete for space after school at SHS.
For the past two years, girls at SHS have been asking about having feminine hygiene products, which are currently only available in the nurses' office, available in bathrooms throughout the school. This year, our student council president, Maher Gandhi, has been looking to resolve the issue with our nurses. The most realistic solution they discussed was distributing pads and tampons to the department offices on each floor, as well as the attendance office on the third floor, in order to increase accessibility. After much deliberation, however, our nurses concluded that the school does not have the resources to do that. Students continue to feel very passionately about this issue, however, going so far as to keep their own collection bins of supplies in the bathrooms. They strongly urge the school to make this happen for them.
Another student brought up the idea of a possible colonial café at the school that could be open at all hours of the day to serve coffee and other refreshments to the student body. As was explained at the meeting, with the regulations concerning food and caffeine at the school as well as space issues, it would be difficult to implement the idea. The feasibility of this idea is still being determined and could potentially result in a café-like fundraiser in the future.
Several questions were raised relating to environmental concerns. One pertaining to styrofoam lunch trays has already been recently answered by a townwide measure to eliminate polystyrene from public and private establishments. Already, SHS has made environmental movements, such as eliminating straws from the cafeteria. However, a question relating to food waste that raised the hopes of composting was deemed to be unrealistic at the high school level.
Another student suggested we have later start times in the mornings, arguing that coming to school later will have many psychological benefits and cause students to be more awake and engage while learning. In an informal poll done by Mr. Bizidlo at this town meeting, there seemed to be a huge amount of support behind later start times, shown by a lot of applause from the students when he asked the audience as a whole. This is a change that the student body seems to be in favor of and hopes to see in the future.
As always, students were incredibly grateful for the opportunity to voice their opinions in a public forum, hoping to make change.
As the first stretch of the school year comes to a close, SHS students have settled into the swing of things, including the mountain of stress that comes with being a high schooler. Fortunately, efforts have been made throughout the school to decrease student stress and promote positivity. Our school nurses and guidance counselors are continuously fabulous in their support of the student body. And two weeks ago, the National Art Honor Society helped stress awareness take flight, literally, by filling the M100 display cases with hundreds of origami butterflies. Written on each butterfly are the stressors of a student at SHS. The motive behind this project was to acknowledge student stress and embody it through a physical installation. Not only is the display beautiful, it captures a powerful message. On a side note, in our last meeting, a video created by the Student Wellness Ambassador Team regarding the definition of success was brought up. This video is scheduled to be released in April, and Ms. Quinn and Ms. Bertnik have clarified that they can get in touch with you after it's released to give you a copy.
This concludes our presentation for this evening. We're now happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you all. Colleagues, questions or comments? Mrs. Consano.
Really impressive. My really, the fundraising that you're doing at the high school is just amazing, and so much kudos to that community. One of the things I noticed, I think I mentioned this last time, but I'm struck by it again, is that your town meeting questions seem really important and relevant to so many people in the building. Are you finding that people are really taking town meetings seriously to get their issues addressed?
I would say that every year, there come some students that take it seriously, some that don't, but ultimately, what comes from it is questions like this that do have things that we can follow up on and take action on. And I think in future years, like, we sometimes get repeat questions, which is sometimes difficult, so we've been trying to publish the results for the questions, then coming next year, we don't get the same questions over and over again.
Good idea.
But some new ones that were raised this year were like the later start times, we never heard that before, I don't think.
The colonial café.
Sure.
That was interesting.
And it's also interesting, a lot of students who do feel very passionate about the issues have been following up with Mr. Bizidlo and administration about things that they're interested in.
That's fabulous. I think it's a wonderful way to voice your opinion and your suggestions, so, thank you, and thank you for coming, as always.
Further questions or comments, Mr. Wensky?
Great report. Always appreciate you coming in and presenting to us and giving a voice to your peers. With regards to the town hall meeting, so you do that by class?
That's, it's two town meetings, so it's all the student body in all the different grades, just in two different times.
How much time do you give per?
It's a shortened, like, period, so maybe like 45 to like 45-ish minutes.
Including transition time, so it usually ends up being like 25 minutes, half hour of questioning.
Okay. Just one other follow-up, but outside of the four questions that you mentioned, were there any others that just didn't make the cut on your list, or?
We probably had upwards of 20 or 30 questions that were asked. These are the ones that we deemed to be the most realistic to actually pursue.
Because it's not often that we're gonna get, like, more honey mustard in the cafeteria or stuff like that. A lot of kids wonder about that, but these are the main ones that.
Thank you so much. Further questions or comments, colleagues? How many stressed butterflies were there?
Oh, good question.
Thousands?
They said about 95% of the school participated in the installation, so I'd assume a solid, like.
Yeah, we filled them out during homeroom and then passed them in.
Gotcha. Well, thank you, as always, for a great report, and as Mrs. Consano and Mr. Wensky alluded to, very interesting topics. In particular, as you may or may not know, school start times is actually a topic that the committee's going to be addressing over the coming months, so, thank you, as always. Dr. Sawyer, was there anything you wanted to add?
Certainly, thank you for your report and appreciate the feedback and the continued interest in making sure we have student voice that is influencing how we look to improve the day-to-day lives of our high school students and improve programming and all those pieces, but also showing the community all the terrific things that you're doing. I do want to, as Mrs. Consano did, cite the amazing fundraising you're doing, and I think being responsive to what people need in terms of, particularly with the St. Anne's Drive, and making sure there was communication there that they didn't really need so much in the way of food, but needed more personal items and that nature, and that I think was quite a good match for what a particular organization needed. In terms of the start time piece, we'll be working on that. I know there's actually a group of students at the high school who have contacted my office about potentially connecting with the administration around some of the research they did last spring, it's part of a project that they're continuing to go with, and we'll be reviving a committee with regard to that in the coming months, as Mr. Palich noted. I think that there's a whole variety of pieces that we want to be sure that we're looking beyond only the academic piece and looking at other, so the fact that there's also student wellness pieces that you mentioned that you're looking at is particularly important. But again, we thank you, we look forward to future reports, and I'm glad that people are following up and working on this, Bizidlo and the high school administration, because that's where things actually change. I mean, it's good to be able to air questions and concerns, but it's when things actually happen that people see that it's the utility of having town meeting and making sure that students understand when there's a voice. Not everything can change, not everyone will get what they want, but there are some things that can happen, and I know the administration's committed to doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is under curriculum. It is an Oak Middle School Design Lab student presentation and report. We are going to hear a presentation regarding the STEM Design Lab at Oak Middle School, an innovation that is connected to our portrait of a graduate vision. The Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Ms. Clouder, will lead the presentation, and once everybody gets situated, we'll have you begin by introducing us to your guests this evening.
Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity. As you know, being able to showcase teaching and learning talent is my favorite way of spending the evening, and having both educators and students together is like Christmas coming a little bit early, so, thanks. As you know from previous presentations, EdLeader 21 is a think-tank organization that helps districts think about how they're going to evolve over time to adjust to the new needs students face as graduates. And so, this is a graphic that kind of showcases some of the steps in going from adopting a vision and then realizing that vision. It's really appealing visually, and it looks very clearly outlined and linear, and what I think it's important to acknowledge is that learning in that way and adapting is certainly not linear. So, in many ways, we're aligning the system to match the vision first put forward by the portrait of the graduate, and also some of the individual innovations happening at various places. And at the same time, as we begin there, we're also here, as people have kind of built their own professional capacity, and I think Mr. Mullerella represents that really well. So, I want to acknowledge the Oak educators who are with us, and then cede the floor so that you can hear directly from teachers and students. This is Jeremy Mullerella, who is a teacher at our design lab, and Pam Portis is going to take my chair next. She's the Curriculum Coordinator for Science and Engineering. And I want to acknowledge Ann Jones, the principal, who also supported this vision at her school, and the Oak educators, raise your hands, who have worked with our students to help them become successful.
So, before they begin their formal presentation, I just want to begin by recognizing the work that Alan Beer did over the years in our technology lab. And, you know, Alan was instrumental in moving from the old industrial arts model to more of a pre-engineering program. And, you know, for 30 years, Alan represented himself and our district in really innovative ways. When Alan retired last spring, we did an extensive search, really looking for someone to fill his position. And unfortunately, no one, through multiple searches, really came through as someone who matched kind of our district and what we were looking for. And so, Dr. Jones and I approached Mr. Mullerella and said, you know, we have some ideas about kind of reinventing our technology program, and are you interested? Jeremy had done a lot of work with project-based learning and was up for the challenge. So, some of the things you'll see different from the traditional tech ed program that we had to the design lab is around kind of creativity and choice. The elements of engineering design are still present in the classroom, but now you'll see students kind of working on multiple projects instead of everybody doing the same project. We have also been very lucky that the district has supported us with some technology. We've been able to add 3D printers. We've been, we added the Sphero robots, and Jeremy will also talk about his drones that he uses. In the future, we're hoping to be able to align our design lab more with our curriculum and have kind of a fluid model where project-based learning that happens in the classroom can carry over into the design lab. So, with that, I'll kind of turn it over to Jeremy and the students.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Before we begin, I'd just like my students to just introduce themselves, please.
Hi, I'm Jordan.
I'm Sydney. We're both in eighth grade.
Hello, my name is Nicole. I'm in seventh grade.
Thank you. So, if I, I'll just sort of begin by giving a sort of a quick overview of design thinking, because it is a focus of my curriculum, and it's also sort of a process that we're using right now to sort of just design the class as it is. And I tend to think of it as very similar to the engineering and design process, only the big difference is that, as you can see, it sort of starts with empathy. You always start by getting to know sort of what people want and what they need. So, at the beginning of this process, we did a lot of research online, looking at other middle schools, sort of what they were doing, similar programs, talking to students, sort of seeing what they would want, talking to teachers, seeing what they would want as well for this class. And sort of like that sort of began the process, it then sort of goes into sort of defining what you want to do. So, we sort of made a list of sort of the main learning goals, the standards you wanted to have in the class, those, you know, the critical thinking, the creativity, those types of skills. And we sort of used that to ideate and came up with a list of many different ideas, many different topics, many projects, all the things that we'd hope to buy one day, and sort of using that, sort of right now, we're in the process of prototyping and testing. So, luckily, as an allied arts teacher, I have six cycles, so each cycle is sort of a different prototype, and we're, each cycle's been a little bit different. We're sort of testing it and see how it goes, how the tools work, the equipment, how the learning goes, if the students are enjoying the class, and then hopefully by the end of the year, we have it perfected, and we'll sort of continue next year with this ballroom. So, it's sort of like the process that we're using, so we're sort of, we're not done yet, we're still in the middle of iterating and figuring things out. As I heard the high school students just talking right now, it's very much relevant to this, so the three lenses we have for designing the design lab, as they were talking about, it's sort of this, it's called desirability, there's feasibility, and then there's viability. And you always start with desirability, sort of what people want, what do they desire, and then it goes to feasibility, so do we have the tools, the equipment, the know-how to actually get it done, and then, just as importantly, is it viable for the long term? Because we don't want to design something where two years from now, it's not going to be viable. So, we're sort of keeping these three lenses, ideally, we want to be in that sweet spot right in the middle. So, when it came to desirability, we did again a lot of research, we talked to a lot of the staff, did surveys, Dr. Jones interviewed teachers recently. And sort of two main components we're looking at here, one is the actual class itself and the curriculum, so hoping to create a learning experience that engages our middle school students in authentic student experiences while developing those 21st century skills. But then, we also are looking to transform in the classroom in a sort of a community sort of maker space. So, it's not just my students who benefit, it's all the students, all the teachers in the school, and one day, we hope to actually broaden that even more into the town community. So, those were the two main things we are looking at. Which leads us to our grading standards. So, we have Nicole to present on this.
Hello, my name is Nicole Iparari-Rebengas, and I'm at Middle School, at Oak Middle School. I'm going, I am currently in design lab class this cycle. I'm going to talk to you about the standards and a little bit what we are learning now. The first standard is that we will demonstrate understanding of the design thinking process. We will learn the different stages of designing and create a product, as we heard from Mr. Mullerella. We learn the different stages of designing and create a product as we heard from Mr. Mullerella. The second standard is that we will demonstrate creative problem-solving techniques. We are learning different ways to think creative, to solve problems. The third standard, the third standard is that we demonstrate collaboration and communication skills. We will learn the importance of talking to each other and helping each other to successfully. The lastly, we learn how to use the classrooms' tools and materials safely. We are expected to work in a safe manner at all times. At the moment, we are following the design thinking process by using the extraordinary cards. My extraordinary card is a mermaid, and all extraordinary cards, they have a little bit of history. So she, for example, she is a princess. And she rescues dolphins, and she needs some, like a hideout. I get a hideout where then she can hide her work from the humans. And that's all, and thank you to Mr. Hopkins, and thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. So here's a few of the things that we've been doing so far this year. And I'm going to sort of pass it over now to Sydney and Jordan to sort of talk about some of the things we've been doing in class.
Okay, so about the first week of Design Lab, we did the design challenges where we got a few pieces of paper and weights, and we had to work as a team to improve and make the best model to hold up the most weights. And we had a winner of every class. So the first picture, ahead of Design Lab, are people from my class who held, I think, like something in the 50s or 60s. And it was really impressive, so, yeah.
And then, we didn't do recycling mobiles for an eighth grade. We also didn't do the cardboard challenge, but, or at rep cycling. But we did pallet wood creations. The whole backstory behind that was kind of like upcycling, so basically we did do upcycling. Mr. Mullerella came to us with the problem that Dr. Jones wanted him to get rid of all the pallets at the end of the hall. So we had to come up with a creative way to do it. And so he took apart the pallets and we had to do the design thinking. And we had to use the tools that were given and the pallets to create something for someone that was needed. I created signs for my seven red teachers.
I have what I created. I created this arrow on like a stand. And at first, I was just going to like display the arrow because I thought it would be cool. But as I went on, I realized that I could make it move. And then I kind of developed it into thinking that I could make it into a windmill. So I didn't have enough time to like completely finalize the product. But if I was to do this again, I know what I would have changed to make it functional, and I would actually use it in my house.
So next was drones and robotics encoding. Our class unfortunately didn't get to use the drones because someone broke them. But we did get to use the Spheros. And if you don't know what a Sphero is, it's kind of like a little ball and like you download the app, well, it's a sphere. And it, you can control it, and you can change the colors, and you can like draw a line, it'll go on that line. And it just did a bunch of things. It was cool. But our, what we did with it was we took a red solo cup and we designed battle bots to pop other balloons. We had a balloon on the back, and it had to, three-fourths of the balloon had to be below the cup, so it was fair. And it had to be blown up to a certain amount, so it was popable. And at the end of the project, we were, it, there was like an octagon, like the show battle bots. And he timed us, and if you got knocked over three times, you were out, or if your balloon got popped, you were out.
One of the last things that we did was 3D design and printing. We also had the choice to do more with Spheros or make stickers. And I think there was one other option. I'm not sure what it was.
Pallet.
Oh, okay.
They were all at the same time.
But I personally decided to do the 3D designing with the 3D printer. So I was one of the only people in my class to do the 3D design. And it was really interesting to actually figure out by myself with help, of course, and put together something that I'm proud of. So I made this little car, and it's supposed to be a Volkswagen. And I took a lot of time trying to like add little details to it, and, yeah.
Well, I made a sign for a dog's cage. Excuse me. I thought it was interesting because if you can see that bone at the bottom, I don't know if you can, it's kind of black on black and small. The way I did it was I went online to, I don't know what the website was, but it was another website with 3D ideas. And I typed in dog bone, and I was scrolling through, and I liked this one. So I picked it, and then I put it into a file, and then I had to go back in and put it into another file and then put it in my thing, which I thought was cool. And I just thought it was cool how I could import it and take it off a website. And then it started off as a block. I had to add the text, and it didn't come with these things. I took ovals and I put them in, and yeah.
So it was really interesting to be able to use the website and kind of play around with it to finalize our 3D models and then watch it as it got printed and how it layered on top of itself.
You also got to do tutorials on the website that taught us how to do it.
All right, so again, this sort of encapsulates what we're sort of doing currently. So as far as the future, so we do have a vision moving forward. Because what we do now, it's great, but we think we can do even, even better. So we do want to continue with the drones. So as Jordan alluded to, we have had some technical difficulties with some of the motors being broken. So I'm learning how to solder and trying to fix the drones. It's been a challenge. We want to sort of move into more of like, rather than just having the students fly little drones in class, learn in the physics, we want them to actually design the drones. So using things like Tinkercad or other programs to actually make their own drones, to print them out in the 3D printer, and then actually be able to fly their own drones. And also looking at some engineering challenges involving those drones. We want to incorporate more electricity. So a lot you can do with circuits and coding and having students invent different types of things once you know how to do the circuits. And we want to include more 2D and 3D fabrication. We want to expand the upcycling program and include an entrepreneurship component. And we're also hoping to include more sort of interdisciplinary support where we can sort of be like an extension of other curriculums. And so if they need something done, students can come to my classroom and get the help that they need. So it's a lot, but I think we can do it. So that's all sort of the desirability. Right now for feasibility, again, you know, what tools do we need, what systems do we need in place? Really sort of thinking about, you know, what kind of things do we need, like the tools, the equipment, and also sort of what kind of experience and support do we need? I'll be the first to admit, I'm not Alan Beer, so I'm not sort of a tradesman. So I have been taking a lot of workshops and classes myself, learning how to use all the wood tools proficiently, taking programs at, you know, MIT and WPI, learning about 3D printing. And so as my pedagogy becomes better, I can better assist my students. Because even right now, I have some students last cycle who wanted to make a table. Not only do we not have the materials, but I personally do not know how to make a table. So we need to solve all of those problems. These are some of the things we're sort of hoping to get in the future to expand our curriculum. So we do have some smaller drones right now. Again, we want to engineer our own drones. We're also hoping to get some larger drones that we can fly outside because those ones, we can do more coding with them. They're not going to crash indoors, and we can also do more engineering with them. There's a lot of sort of retrofitting you can do to drones. So we could either move a pizza or drop medical supplies or whatever sort of challenge we pose. We're hoping to get more 3D printing because, as you can tell, the students like using the 3D printer. But this right here took four hours, five hours.
Total, probably five classes.
Yeah, so it took, well, I'm saying to actually print. So it took about four or five hours just to print this. So it's very time-consuming. So to actually be able to use it in a curriculum, we need at least, I would say, three 3D printers. And we're hoping to get the fins on the lower right a little bit. So that's sort of a classroom electrical component kit where students can sort of snap them together and make different inventions and sort of have, you know, make things using the circuits, sewing machines, some updated tools. The fin in the middle is a laser cutter. So less of sort of tools that will help us be able to do what we sort of want to do with the program. I do want to point out that we are sort of keeping cost in mind. So all the programs you see, like the Fusion 360 and Inkscape, they're all free. It's not, we're not trying to like buy expensive programs. Even the 3D printers that I want to get, they are sort of upgradable. So rather than having to buy a new 3D printer when a new one comes out, you just buy a small upgrade kit. And it makes it much cheaper in the long run. And again, lastly, we're looking at viability. So how can we sort of make this program sustain? So you already sort of alluded to the fact that we're trying to buy, you know, cheaper tools if we can, buy free software when we can. A lot of things, I'm looking to buy either educator discounts or refurbished products as well. We're also trying to look at, you know, in the long run, what we can do. And really sort of, you know, I'm, you know, applying for lots of grants. As Ms. Portress talked about, thinking that the Colonial Fund, for all the hard work they've been doing for us as well, getting us sort of what we needed to this point. And also looking at that, again, the entrepreneurship component, where hopefully we can become sort of a self-sustaining program where we don't need to sort of borrow more money, we can sort of buy our own supplies. So that's sort of the vision moving forward. Are there any questions?
Oh, impressive presentation and impressive group of students, certainly. Colleagues, questions and comments? Dr. McGee?
So this is great. It's really nice to see, after all the discussions we've had about project-based learning and everything, to see it actually start to happen. And I guess the two questions I have, one has to do with evaluation. One of the premises of project-based learning is that they're going to learn physics or they're going to learn math and English and everything by doing a project. And in this class, in this course of work, is there a valuation along those lines? Or are you simply evaluating the quality of the project itself?
As far as assessment is concerned? So the main assessment is sort of looking at like the, you know, the creativity, the collaboration. They are graded on design thinking as well, which for the most part is, you know, engineering, but with that built in empathy. So I'm sort of like looking at that component. I'm not grading them on, they're not being graded on like physics or math or writing. But a lot of like the work that we do does include those concepts. Even like the vector graphics that we do, that is math. Like it's math computation. So even though like that being graded on it, it is being.
And I think that would be moving forward in the future when we try to tie back more into the curriculum areas and utilize the Design Lab for, you know, producing some of those products. I think that's where you'll see the content kind of play in to the assessment piece.
Overall, nice, thank you.
I just want to say something real quick. Math is included in 3D printing a lot more than I thought it would be, unfortunately. When I was designing this, it wasn't centering it by itself, so I had to do the math. I had to find the length and find out why this is the center.
Just the only other thing I wanted to know, is there any way for us as a school committee to see a carve-out as to what your wish list is? You know, to fully implement what you would like to do, what the, what the cost estimates would be?
Again, I know that the Colonial Fund is doing a lot of work trying to raise money for the program. So just sort of just spreading word about the work that they're doing would be okay.
Mrs. Fritz?
Thank you. I love the presentation stuff from the students because that's how we really understand what you're doing in the classroom, and you all seem to really like this. This isn't just reading a book and having a test. You're really doing this hands-on, and it's exciting. And when we talk about costs, our job, I think, is to look at, you know, we're looking at grants, the Colonial Fund. Should that be where the money comes from? Should it be coming from our appropriated budget? Something I think we need to really take a hard look at as we move forward. Because these are the programs we want to push with Portrait of a Graduate. We want students to be learning at this level. So to hear you saying we have to look for grants and Colonial Fund, it shouldn't be that way. That's my personal opinion. So I like what you asked. We should be looking at what is needed, what can we do to move these programs forward? Because students are benefiting in more ways than we can count, I think. So thank you, and it's our job to help you push this forward.
Mrs. Gonzano?
I have a couple of questions as well. I was really impressed when you talked about your design process. And so I'm curious, what is perhaps one takeaway that you've experienced from going to this Design Lab that perhaps you haven't learned in another class?
Kind of problem solving, unlike, because like addressing the situation. Because the first question when we were building all this is build something for someone who needs it. And none of the really classes are really like addressing the problem.
So like real world?
Yeah.
Along with that, it was interesting because a lot of people in my class chose to do stickers, and I wanted to do something that I could actually keep in my room and be proud of it, and be like, I made that. So it was a process to learn how to make all these shapes. I think I spent about maybe three hours on all just to make this shape and like the windows. But all the little details came together. And in my other classes, if I didn't understand what we were doing, I could have easily went to a different student or my teacher and they could like help me through it and give me a direct answer. For example, math, my teacher could just give me like a decimal or something like that. But in this class, I didn't really have that many other students to go to. And when I asked the teacher, he didn't, he couldn't tell me exactly what to do since it was my own project, so I learned a lot from it.
That is amazing. And I can follow up. My other question then to you, Jeremy, was about the student feedback that you referenced. How would, how do you solicit that?
Really, it's more like the day-to-day, like talking to students. I noticed it began last year with my eighth grade students, asking them like, you know, from your tech at class, what did you like the best, what do you want, like what should I teach next year, sort of getting their feedback. Really sort of like talking to students every day, looking to see how they enjoy things. And kind of, you know, there's a fine line between like, I want them to problem solve, but I don't want them to be sort of overly frustrated when it's a bad experience. My main goal is to have them leave my class like designing, like engineering, like, you know, computer science and wanting to pursue it at the high school. So sort of just like getting that feedback.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming. You did a great job.
Ms. Twensky?
Just a comment, a great presentation, and I'm struck by the real-world skills that seventh and eighth grader are learning at this point. A couple of weeks ago, I was on a business trip, and we spent a full day at what we call a design sprint. It was for an e-commerce website. And your extraordinary cards were our personas, right? We had three personas of customers to assess their needs and then come up with, you know, improvements to the website to see if it met their needs. And then we go and we do some what we call A/B testing and test that out to see if, if the decisions we made actually have an impact. So very great presentation. Also, I think underlying here is the collaboration and the communication that the students have of one another too. I think that there's a lot of value there too in working with your peers. So, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Very impressive group. Dr. Sawyer, anything you'd like to add?
Want to thank you for the presentation. Students did a terrific job and really appreciate you sharing your experiences with us so we can really understand how it's working from, from your perspective where it's most important. I do want to commend Dr. Jones and Ms. Portress for coming forward with the, this was their design, right? In terms of we could have replicated what we've been doing, which was outstanding. But to take a little different look at how to do it differently and able to recruit an educator of Mr. Mullerella's quality to take this on, I think is already paying dividends even just a short amount of time or a third of the way through the school year essentially, and we're already seeing some great results. And so the sky is the limit as we, as we go forward. No pun intended with the drones. But in terms of the, just a little bit of background for those watching, this is part of our 30-day rotation Allied Arts pieces. So all of our students in Oak Middle School will go through this. The vast majority will receive it once in seventh grade and once in eighth grade. And so it's far-reaching in its opportunity. It's an intensive experience over a 30-day cycle. But having the opportunity to also open it up for other possibilities in terms of that makerspace type piece, I think even, even being able to have options for kids to use it in different times of day or after school or however that might work out, I think is, is really amplifying the impact of that space and the ability to, to make that, align it with what we're trying to do strategically around project-based learning and real-world, real-life kinds of examples of applying knowledge. So that's, and that's very, very exciting to me to see this all come to fruition from a vision to starting to become very concrete. To the, the point about making sure we're supporting it as a district, I think it's absolutely, it's well-taken. And I think it's absolutely true that we need to be thinking about ways to do that. I am pleased that this is an example of the way that when we envisioned the Colonial Fund as a vehicle to help us with innovative practices. When we were processing the budget for this current year, you know, we made that, that was being created last December and January, and then through the spring. And we really didn't even have this vision yet for this program. That was all happening simultaneously. And so being able to utilize the Colonial Fund for seed money to start putting this into action right away and trying to get some proof of concept around this, yeah, this is working and this is something we want to expand or this is what we would need going forward. It enables us to not have to wait a whole other budget cycle to get something off the ground. And so working as seed- And so working as seed money to, to spread innovation in our schools and then we can decide to pick it up and use more traditional funding methods to sustain it, I think is a great model and something that I'm really pleased that we've been able to do as, as a school district as a result of that. And do thank Michelle Biscotti and Kathleen Cohane. And this is our featured project. So if people are looking to make decisions about their year-end giving, charitable giving, this is, you know, the, the focus really is on donations at this time of year to the Colonial Fund being directed towards beefing this program up with more equipment and to be able, students like these, to be able to really do something. And I think you sense the pride that our students had in the fact that they did this themselves and they puzzled through it and worked through it. And although, I mean, they're, they're terrific projects and, and they have meaning to them because they're the ones who created them. And I think we have to find more and more ways to help our students have that kind of ownership of their learning. So again, thank you to everybody involved. We really appreciate it. We do have certificates for our students and for thanking them for coming out and sharing your experiences with us. So if you could come up and shake the committee's hand and I will pass these out to you. And again, thank you to everyone for a great presentation.
Nice presentation.
Congratulations.
Excellent.
And our students and teachers are welcome to go home and get some rest. It's a long week. We're almost to the December break.
Excellent. The next item on our agenda this evening is under Finance and Operations, is a report on the ClearGov budget communication tool. By way of background, as part of our committee's five-year strategic priorities, we established a goal to implement a new communications tool that provides the community with key information regarding school district finances and programming. We will hear tonight a presentation regarding ClearGov, a tool being explored by the town of Shrewsbury with potential application by SPS as well. I'd like to welcome Mr. Brian Berdick, who is the president and co-founder of ClearGov, who will be making this evening's presentation. So thank you and welcome. And actually, if I'll open it up to Mr. Collins, our assistant superintendent for Finance and Operations, for an introduction.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to set a couple of preface pieces and then turn it over to Mr. Berdick for his demonstration. And as you mentioned, we are engaged, hopefully, in, in this joint project with the town and Town Manager's Office to take what is a fairly complicated topic of school and municipal finance and leverage the tool that they have produced to take lots of data and simplify it into kind of click-and-point infographics. So in the report that I provided to you, you know, we're at the very beginning stages of this project. And there is a project rollout timeline included in your report. This particular product for both, there's two components that Mr. Berdick will explain. One is called the so-called Insights product, which takes historical data and provides comparative information with like districts from multiple fiscal years. And then there's a secondary piece on ClearGov budgets. And that's a more prospective piece that would potentially help us to describe upcoming year budgets to the community at large. And I know that this is also connected to one of our district goals, which is, which says, and I'm just going to read this because it's important, is by December 2018, implement a new communication tool that provides the community with key information regarding school district finances and programming. So we're hopeful that with the rollout of this project, that we're able to achieve that goal, not necessarily, necessarily by that timeline, but certainly within our two-year period. And then finally, the cost of this product, $30,400 on an annual basis. And that's for both the town and the school combined for this upcoming year. Would be funded by a so-called Community Compact State Grant that the Town Manager's Office has applied for. And we have a very high confidence that we'll receive that funding. So with those kind of background pieces, I'd be happy to turn it over to Mr. Berdick and show a demonstration of the product.
Excellent. Excellent. I'm not going to take it personally that everybody just left. So thank you so much for your time. And, and I do have to say I have tremendous respect. My wife was a school committee for nine years in Hopkinton. So I have lived vicariously through her and, and know what a hard and sometimes thankless job you guys have. So I really appreciate all that you do. You know, thank you, Patrick, for that quick overview. I thought I would tell you just a really quick kind of background on how ClearGov all got started. So my partner, a guy named Chris Bullock, literally sitting around dining room table with his wife one night, going through their finances and, and looking at their, you know, their mortgage payment and how much of that was taxes and started kind of wondering where all this money was going. And went online and found that, he, he also happens to live in Hopkinton. Found that, you know, Hopkinton and, and frankly, most towns in this day and age were being transparent in the sense that they were taking their budget information and they were publishing it. But not in a way that the average citizen frankly could really understand, right? These complicated spreadsheets. You guys know, you know, how complicated municipal finance is. Lots of funds, movement between funds, a lot of different moving parts. And, you know, you have to almost be a CPA to understand all of this. And so he just felt that there had to be a better way, that there was this, this transparency gap where municipalities were, were being transparent in the sense that they were publishing information, but weren't being clear in the sense that they were making it presentable to the way the average citizen could actually follow that. And so Chris is kind of a, kind of a data wonk. And he sat down, pulled together some information that was publicly available through DESI, through the Department of Revenue here in Massachusetts, published that originally for all Massachusetts towns and then all Massachusetts schools at a basic level. And then immediately started getting a lot of feedback from town managers, from superintendents saying, hey, can I take this information, make it available on our website? And that really led to the formation of ClearGov as a business. Just to give you a sense, you know, two years ago, it was Chris and I and a handful, about 10 or so pilot customers. Today, here we are, two years later, we have about 100 communities just in Massachusetts that we currently work with. We've expanded now into 21 different states. So a few hundred communities across, you know, 21 different states now. And we think that, you know, we've really kind of hit, struck a nerve here. So we're very excited to be working with Shrewsbury, both the town and the school. Just to give you a sense as to what we do, if you go to cleargov.com and, and you can see this yourself, but I'm going to type in Shrewsbury Public Schools. We've created a profile for literally every town, city, village, school district in the state of Massachusetts. We've actually done civics, you know, towns and cities for all 50 states. We've done school districts now for about seven different states. And so you literally look up any town in the country and you're going to get at least a basic profile. I'm going to show you Shrewsbury Public Schools' profile. And this, at this point, this is information that we have aggregated from publicly available sources. So DESI, Department of Revenue, Census Bureau, a variety of different sources. And we've activated you guys now with the premium profile, which has a lot more depth. As a part of the implementation process, you can actually provide us even deeper information, fresher information. I'm not going to go into all of those details, but you can update this even further. What I'm going to show you is what we've taken is, is taken all that information and presented it in a way that everybody can understand, right? So this first page here is a district snapshot. So students, employees, a financial overview, expenditures per student, capital outlay. And again, this is all public, publicly available. So you can go and check this out yourself. Performance overview, that sort of thing. And I can start to drill down into this information. So if I want to look at the expenditures in more detail, I can see, you know, how does Shrewsbury's education budget break down into all of these different categories? I can see this visually in a variety of different ways, pie charts, bar charts, mountain charts. All of our charts are interactive. So I can turn on or off certain components to get a different view of the world very, very quickly. We've got historical data. So I can see how this breaks down into all of these different categories. And I can see those trends over time. And then most importantly, because we've gathered the data on every school district in the state of Massachusetts, I can actually get this peer analysis. So in this case, we're looking at instructional services per student on a, on a, essentially on a per-student basis. And in this particular view, we're looking at a ClearGov default peer group, which is a, a group of peers driven by an algorithm based on student, size of student body, average household income, that sort of thing. And so you can see directly here, you know, how does Shrewsbury compare to similar districts, right? To the overall state average. I, you guys have actually already set up, or I think maybe we set up this as a demo, a couple of different custom peer groups. As a customer now, you can create as many different peer groups as you want. And I'll show you that in a little bit. But just to give you a sense, here we can do districts with similar student demographics. Again, how do, how do you compare? And you can look at any category within your budget, right? So you see that comparison down here. You see a bell curve to give you a sense. It's just sort of how many standard deviations from the mean you are. And then of course, the raw information down below. It's not just financial data though. If we go into the student body, we can drill down into the makeup of the students. So we can see enrollment by grade. How's that trending over time? We can see high-need students as a percentage of the student body. How does that break down into the different kind of special needs categories? You guys know that's a huge driver of costs. And so having that information is really valuable. You can see how these have trended over time. And again, we can break this down into specific categories. So we can see, you know, a different view of the world. We can look at student diversity. So all of this data, you know, I wouldn't have time to go through the whole profile, but encourage you to do that yourself. And then it's performance information as well. So looking at your overall graduation rates, your student test scores, both MCAS, SAT, that sort of thing. So all of this is really publicly available. It's designed to help, you know, you guys better communicate with, with your community, with students, with parents, helping them understand, you know, everything that's going on. We've just recently added a brand-new feature, and by recently, I mean like earlier this morning. Launched a new feature called Projects. I'm going to give you a quick overview of that because I think, you know, this may have some applicability as well. I don't actually have a live version to show you because literally we, we launched it this morning. It's included in your subscription. So this isn't, you know, an additional charge. But to give you the idea, the whole idea behind a project is, so Patrick mentioned that you guys are building a new school. And so that would be an example of a big project. They don't all have to be that big. But the idea is very, very simply, in a matter of minutes, right? You can create a project page that provides an overview of a project. You can add pictures. You can add supporting materials, any documents that go behind the project. You can identify the budget, both in terms of, you know, what the projected expenditures are, where you are in that process. You can create a very simple timeline. So an initial timeline of where the highlights are. And then update those along the way. And then we can allow users to subscribe to these projects. So I'm interested in the new school and I subscribe to that as an individual. And then every time there's an update to that project, it automatically gets communicated out to whoever's specifically interested in that. The reason we added this feature is we found that people are really, really interested in what's going on in their community. Yes, they're interested in the finances overall. But they're even more passionate about kind of key projects that, that those finances are being used to fund, right? And so this is a great way of, again, very, very easily communicating that. All of this can be incorporated directly into your website. So you can embed this very easily directly into your website. You don't have to come to cleargov.com to show that. The last piece I'll show you here real quick and then open it up to any questions. Everything I've shown you so far is about being publicly available. It's about sharing, communicating. This piece now, what you're seeing is what we call our admin console. This is, this is not for the muggles, right? This is for, for you guys, right? This is for the administrative team. You'll see there's a number of different applications here built into the console. Things that allow you to go in and create those custom peer groups, as I mentioned. Customize your profile in some different sort of ways. Create projects. That's where you would do all of this. The budget and the forecasting is, is a much longer presentation. So I'm going to skip that for tonight. Although happy to answer any questions about it. The, the cool part that I wanted to show you here was the benchmarking application. And the benchmarking application allows you to compare literally any line item in your budget against a relevant set of peer communities. And so as you guys get into this, you'll start to create some peer groups and, and save them. I'm going to just create one on the fly here and I'm going to do it very quickly. So the way that this works is I can select the different line items that I want to compare. And I'm just going to kind of pick a couple here sort of randomly. And then I click next. And it's really important when you're doing peer analysis that you don't just pick the three school districts that are next door to you. Because they may or may not be appropriate peers depending upon what you're looking at. In fact, depending upon which line items you're looking at, you may have multiple different peer groups over time. And so the way that we address that is we've built in, you know, about 10 or 15 different filters here that allow you to very go, very quickly go in and select. And you'll see as I activate a filter and I narrow down the parameters here. Over on the right-hand side, it's going through, you know, all 400 school districts in Massachusetts and finding the ones that most closely match the criteria that I selected. So I'm going to select just a couple here to narrow it down pretty quickly. Obviously, if you were doing this for real, you'd be a little bit more thoughtful about those. So we get a, a match of 10. It's a pretty good number. I click next. And what you'll see immediately come up is the line items that I selected. Whoops, I forgot one thing. I'm going to go back. Sorry, I forgot to select the year. So select criteria. Narrow it down. At 25, that's close enough. So you'll see it'll compare the line items that I selected, what is Shrewsbury spending on each of those categories, compared to, in this case, the 25 other districts that most closely matched the filter criteria that I selected. I can look at this information on an actual spend basis. I can look at it on a per-pupil spend basis, which we think is typically the most meaningful way to see this information. I can see it as a percent of total budget. I can export this information to Excel if I want to do deeper analysis on this. I could save this as a peer group now and say, this is actually really an interesting group of, of districts for me to compare on a regular basis. And I can go back in and chart all of this information. So if we use the chart builder, this time I'll use one of the saved peer groups. You'll see here in the chart builder, as I pick a category. Well, let me go back and create one. I could show you that in more detail. But you can go in and chart all this information as well, right? So you can see bar charts. You can see, you know, the bell curve. You can see, you know, trend graphs over time. And then use all of those charts for school committee presentations, you know, town presentations, whatever the case may be. So that's the kind of nine-minute flyby. There's a lot more depth to this. Happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions? Dr. McGee?
This is terrific. I really like it.
Great.
And I think it, it makes things clearer for the public. It also makes things clearer for us. We can float up. We can drill down.
Yep.
Very nice. A couple of questions. You have a website or data on just about every district in the, the state, whether they subscribe to your service or not.
Correct.
What do we get by subscribing to your service that isn't there now?
Yeah. So a couple of things. First of all, you get access to this backend for the ability to do all of the benchmarking, all the charting, all that sort of thing. Second, you get the ability to, so the, the data that we have on every district in the state is essentially the, the DESI data, right? Primarily. There's some census data there as well. There's some Department of Revenue data there as well. But it's essentially the data that's publicly available. And so there's typically a delay in that, right? As you guys know. Actually, one of the things that we're, a new project that we're doing in Massachusetts is if you send us or... is if you send us or, uh, your, um, peer, if you, if you kind of reach out to your peer districts and have them send us their DESI, uh, report, we can automatically suck that into our platform. We don't display it publicly, but we can make it available as a part of your backend, even though DESI's not gonna publish that data until, you know, next June or whenever, right? You get the ability to provide deeper, richer data as a part of this, so, uh, and it's very, very simple. Uh, on your end, the only work involved is literally, you know, printing out a report from your accounting system. And so typically, our custo, what our customers will do is they'll wanna provide fresher information, because they wanna communi, communicate the most recent information. And they'll typically provide deeper data, deeper levels of detail. It's up to you how deep you wanna go, but our system will support all the way down to checkbook level detail if you wanna go that far, right? Um, the projects capability is something that's part of the subscription, the ability to, uh, create all the dist, different peer groups. And then, of course, the whole budgeting application, which we didn't really get into, is also part of the subscription. And in a nutshell, the budgeting application really sort of streamlines your budget building process, both for, you know, the, the finance director who's driving that, as well as the school committee and all the department heads who are participating in that process.
Man, I just had, just to clarify too, if I'm, if I'm understanding it, uh, the, the, what anyone can see on the web right now for any community is just sort of the base, some baseline data. Uh, but you did get to the, the drill downs, the subscription needs to be.
That's right.
Part of it. So some of the, what we're seeing tonight has been unlocked.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's, it's a good way to think about it. We've unlocked a lot more data, we've, you know, added a bunch of functionality around that data to give you sort of business intelligence tools around it, um, as well as, you know, projects and other sorts of things.
Dr. McGee, go ahead.
So, do you, um, I'm, I guess I, I wanna focus on the, the notion as to how much work is involved in giving you the data that we all need to see, what we need to see.
Yep.
And how this, um, uh, interacts with the work that is necessary to supply information to DESI?
Yep.
Uh, are, uh, do you build any kind of interface with our software to extract data? Is there, how, how does the workload compare to right now?
So, uh, two thoughts there. Um, if all you wanted to do was provide the same level of depth as what you currently supply to DESI, there, li, literally the only work is for you to send us the exact same file you sent to DESI, you send it to us. So it's, it's literally an email is all the effort. We do all of the onboarding, we've built some AI technology, some machine learning technology that allows us to take that data and automatically feed it in. What most of our customers wanna do though is they wanna provide deeper and fresher data. Um, and that is also very, very simple, right? It's, it's basically a report from your accounting platform, and I'm not sure which accounting platform you're using, but it doesn't matter, 'cause we've worked with all of them. Um, so it's a simple report that you guys run. Probably takes ten, fifteen minutes for somebody to run that report. You send that data to us, it's basically a, sort of an output of your chart of accounts. Again, our AI platform and our, our team, basically our client success team, does the data onboarding, so we do all the mapping, we do all of the work. It's completely turnkey for you. Um, the only thing that then you have to do is, you know, once in a while, we find some, you know, wonky line item. My favorite example, Gloucester, Massachusetts is one of our customers, and they had a line, line item for clam licensing. And so we're like, okay, we don't really know where that goes, so we had a conversation with them, right? Yeah, so you might have a couple of those, we'll ask you, we'll clarify where do those go, and then we turn it on, right? Once we've done that mapping, then it's really up to you, right? You can send us updates as frequently as you want. Most of our customers do it on a quarterly basis. Um, but once we've done that mapping one time, uh, it's all automated from there. So you just send us that updated report once a quarter. We, you know, run it through the platform and away we go.
Do you build the interface with our software or the report? Do you, do you come into our system and look?
It's a standard report that your system will be able to run.
Something we should have already?
Yeah. It, I mean, I, I'm only technical enough to be dangerous, but our, our client success team, uh, whi, which, what accounting platform you guys use?
Using Munis.
Munis, okay. So we've got hundreds of customers that use Munis. We'll be able to tell you which report it is to run.
Further questions, Mr. Wensky?
Uh, just a question about, uh, how this data would interact with our site. Uh, would, would there be some level of integration within the Shrewsbury Public Schools site to make that information accessible to the public?
You mean, you mean the website?
Yeah, that's what, so, similar to what we just saw, you know, if you go to cleargov.gov, and you can click through. If I go to Shrewsbury Public Schools in the future and we, we subscribe to the service.
Yep.
Are we able to make that information available within, uh, our own site?
Exactly. So there's a variety of different options. Everything from, you can just put a simple banner on your homepage, which a lot of customers do, that links, uh, right off to the site. You can do what we call, um, a, a custom domain, which is essentially a header that we create for you. Or you can leverage what we call our widget. Um, so this is an example, North Attleboro, Massachusetts, one of our customers. They've taken the widget, this is, this is their site, right? And that sort of school transparency page is integrated directly into their site. So this is a widget. Again, this is, you know, twenty minutes worth of work for your web developer, right? It's, it's all what's called embed code, which, you know, sounds really technical, uh, but it's apparently really, really easy stuff. Probably any one of these three students could do it. We're sitting here before. So, uh, really, really simple.
And with the widget, so all the click-throughs are available?
Yes, yeah, we, we, um, you know, provide reporting, uh, we use, you know, um, uh, Google's, can't think of the term right now, but Google Analytics, yeah.
Okay. And then just one other question about the, the fees, the cost involved. Was thirty thousand, was that an annual?
Yes.
Thirty thousand is the annual subscription, that includes both the, uh, town and the school. And I actually believe, I think the annual's slightly less than that, 'cause I believe that included, uh, setup fees for the first year. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head what there was, but it's a little bit less than that.
Okay.
For, for us, from the application from this year, depending on what pricing is in future years, the school portion, kind of a go-forward annual basis, would be twelve thousand five hundred.
That's about right, yeah.
Dr. McGee?
So the budgeting piece on this.
Yep.
Again, focusing on the idea of extra work, is, is this, uh, a different process, uh, regarding the data you acquire to help with the budgeting process?
So, uh, the data that you provide us to set up the budgeting process is exactly the same data that you provide us, uh, to, you know, set up your transparency profile. So the onboarding piece is the same. Um, the budgeting process itself, or the budgeting app itself, is really designed to save you a, a ton of work. Um, that is a little bit longer demonstration. Be happy to set that up for you guys when it's, you know, whenever it's, uh, appropriate. But at a very high level, think of it this way. Um, you provide us that historical data, right? So we've got your historical budget information. Again, we do all of the work, you just have to run the reports for us. Uh, your business officer, your, your head of finance, you know, when you start the budgeting process every year, can go in and, in about two minutes, can create a baseline budget. Regardless of what, whatever budget methodology you guys use, you're still gonna be able to use that methodology, it's just a tool to do that faster, right? So if you're doing, hey, we wanna do sort of a two percent increase across the board, or we wanna do zero-based budgeting, or whatever process you wanna use, the, um, you know, finance director would create that base budget, um, would assign components of the budget to the different department heads, right? Uh, and then with one click of the button, sends each of those components out to all the different department heads. They're able to review that base budget, make their changes, make their comments. We, we have a, an audit trail that tracks all of those comments along the way, so you always see exactly what's happened. You don't have to worry about reconciling, you know, seventeen different Excel spreadsheets and making an error somewhere along the way that messes everything up. It's all baked into that. The comments come back, the finance director can review that, um, can make changes, approve, just, you know, not approve. Uh, send that out then to, to you guys, the committee as reviewers, right? So you get to see all of the different components, make comments, et cetera. So it's, think of it as really just a simplified workflow process that, that, you know, is gonna make your lives easier.
Nice. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mrs. Fritz?
I have a question along the budgeting platform.
Yep.
For forecasting?
Yes.
Is there forecasting built in?
Yes. Glad you asked.
Question as well, you had alluded to, uh, uh, an app in there that might've taken a little bit longer to explain, but I'm wondering if you can give us a brief introduction to it.
Yes, um, so the budgeting application does include, uh, forecasting, uh, capability as well. It will automatically create a forecast. Um, it will do it, uh, for N minus one year, where N is the number of years of history that you provide, right? So if you provide us two years of history, it'll do a one-year forecast. If you provide ten years of history, it'll do up to a nine-years, uh, of forecast, right? Um, again, the, the forecasting is sort of automatic, but then we make it really simple for you to go in and tweak any of the dials. If we say, hey, you know, we're expecting, you know, student, uh, population to grow by X amount. Boom, you change that, it'll automatically create a new forecast. If you're expecting, you know, healthcare costs, uh, to, uh, increase by s, by s, by a certain percentage, make that change, uh, and it'll automatically be forecast. So again, really, really simple stuff. It's, it's, it's cool.
Yes, thank you.
Just a quick follow-up, the results of that, is, is everything that's created automatically a public document? Or do we choose how to present the information?
Great question, yeah, great question. So as a subscriber, you have complete control over what gets published, right? And so what and when it gets published? So, uh, for example, in the, uh, in just the, the current profile, you can define how many years of history you want to publish. Um, you could decide when you're creating the budget, there's a, essentially a button in the budget application that says, publish the profile. So when you flip that switch, or when you, you turn that toggle, it will publish the budget. It will publish it as, you know, a, um, pro forma budget, or a, um, is the right term? But, you know, budget hasn't been approved yet, I can't think of the right term, but.
Proposed?
Proposed budget, thank you. Yeah, it'll, 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 uh, present it that way, right? So what some of our customers have done is, is publish their proposed budget, let's say, right before town meeting, um, or a week or two before town meeting, let people, you know, see that, comment on it, whatever. Um, but you have complete control over, over all of that.
Thank you. This is Konzana.
Uh, so.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, the question about the municipal side. So is it similar to what you're explaining to us today? And do they interface, do they, uh, connect to each other?
Uh, so it's, it's very, very similar, right? Um, I would say the, really the only, I would call it meaningful difference, uh, well, two meaningful differences. One, uh, obviously in Massachusetts, you know, the, the school budget is sort of part of the town budget. That's not the same in other states, by the way. Um, uh, so you'll see the school budget as a part of the town budget in, in the Shrewsbury. You won't see as much detail, right? Um, so that's sort of one difference. Uh, and the other difference is, is performance metrics, right? So graduation rates, uh, test scores, that sort of thing are part of the school product, um, whereas the town product will have a different set of, you know, performance metrics. That's really fundamentally the only, the only difference between the two.
Okay, thank you.
This is Fritz.
Can you talk about technical support or help that you provide for that subscription?
Yeah, no, you're completely on your own.
Okay.
No, uh, it's a great question. Uh, so as I mentioned, we do all the heavy lifting of the data onboarding. Um, the subscription includes unlimited access, unlimited number of users, so you decide who has access to the, uh, you know, to the admin console, and it includes unlimited support.
Okay.
Right? Um, you guys saw the product is pretty easy to use, it's pretty intuitive, kind of point and click. Um, but any questions you have, any, and, and one of the things that we really try to do is be proactive with best practices, share case studies, how other people are using it. Um, I think that's gonna be particularly important with the projects, uh, feature, because I think a lot of people will use it in different ways, and we wanna share that. Uh, but whatever you need, we're gonna be there to support. You'll have a dedicated, uh, client success. In fact, um, Anna, I think you've already connected with Anna?
Talk to her today.
Yeah. Um, so.
A dedicated?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Wensky?
Uh, two follow-up questions actually for Patrick. One, that the twelve thousand that you've referenced, uh, would that be, would that come out of that potential state grant? Would that be covered by that?
For the first year it is.
Okay.
Yep. And, and, you know, I, I couldn't sit here and tell you that I know enough about the community co-op PAC grants if they're renewable for subsequent years or not, or really, they're kind of seed money to make change processes, I think, in municipalities and school districts. So I think it's probably a one-year.
Sure. And then just, I mean, from your perspective, I mean, do you see administrative efficiencies from this tool? I, I would guess.
I'm glad you asked. Uh, I, I think, um, you know, and I know Dr. McGee and Dr. Sora and I looked at a demonstration, I think it was about twelve months or so ago, um, and we did a, we did a webinar. And at that time, um, the budgeting feature, uh, the project space were not components of your product.
Right, we launched budgets in September and projects today.
Okay. So, I mean, I think the difference between then and now is, uh, some of the value add of the, the pieces Mr. Berdick talked about. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, I, I, my viewpoint is I am excited about this product. I'm excited about the ability to simplify messages, um, and for people to have, uh, a broad picture with a infographic, and then drill down for more data. Um, the pieces that, as a practical matter, are, uh, not, uh, as seamless are, um, you know, we, we, we could not, and we don't, when we produce the annual end-of-year report, which is, uh, done by all school districts in a very structured format, um, from, uh, we, we don't simply print a report and fill in, uh, a spreadsheet. There's, there's a crosswalk, there's an intermediary work that has to be done from our accounting system to get it into the format of the end-of-year report. And, uh, that, that's fairly common across school districts. Um, so the, the notion of simply producing, uh, an Excel file from our accounting system or CSV file and shipping it off and just uploading it, isn't necessarily, uh, doable right now, because we don't have perfect alignment between our accounting system and the required accounting system. Certainly, we need to work on that, and there are some complexities in terms of the requirements for the. Uh, in terms of how they re, uh, require data. I'll give you one example to try to, uh, specify this, is that, for example, um, calculating, uh, professional dev, development costs, which is something the Department of Ed required for a long time, they're actually moving away from that. They, uh, would want us to, uh, account for the teacher time and the staff time for professional development days. And so while we would expense, uh, Mrs. Smith's salary to the teacher's salary account at Coolidge School, a hundred percent, to that expense account, we would then, as part of the crosswalk, have to take four out of one hundred and eighty-four days as a percentage and calculate that portion to a different Department of Ed account called professional development. And that was part of the crosswalk process. That's why you can't just download a file and upload it to, to this product, ClearGov. Uh, and there are other kinds of examples of that. Um, you know, I think we could be, uh, you know, we certainly need to contemporize our, uh, accounting and continue to work on, and there are annual changes, uh, that the Department of Ed requires. More recently, it was around technology expenditures, um, in more specificity, so. Um, and, you know, certainly a move towards greater accountability of expenses on a school-by-school basis, which is a federal initiative. Uh, so, um, you know, I don't want to give some, I don't disagree at all what Ms. Berdick is saying can be done. Um, but the assumption is, presumption is, is that you have perfect setup of your accounting system uh, to capture your expenses that match the end-of-year report, and there's still work to be done there.
So, so if I could clarify just one thing, though, Patrick, 'cause you may not even be aware of this yet, 'cause I don't know how much you've gotten into it with, with Anna. Um, so, just so we're clear, you do not have to give us data in the DESI format, right? So you could actually give us what we call native format. So exactly what comes out of your accounting system. We have technology that will map that all into the right bucket. And you actually have the option in your profile to display the data in what we call ClearGov format, which is sort of the normalized, standardized chart of accounts, or your native format. So it doesn't have to match, uh, DESI for you to be, you know, up and running. So I just wanna make sure that was.
Okay.
That was clear.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of our learning process. I think that, um, you know, again, as we go through this, uh, onboarding and learning process, uh, I'd be happy to learn about that part. Um, as far as the forecasting goes, um, you know, certainly, I, I, and again, this is part of our learning. I don't know about the forecasting process. I understand, certainly, anybody can understand the concept of, if you're health insurance, you wanna. wanna forecast five or seven or 10% annual increases, um, that's easy to do with, uh, you know, certain types of products. Uh, if you want to, uh, change your health insurance plans and forecast a greater or lesser enrollment, um, and, uh, when, you know, when it comes to teacher salaries, uh, step increases based upon ratios of people that are at top step or still making steps, that's not just a simple add a cola feature. There's some other embedded work that you have to do to make, uh, a more precise forecast.
Right.
Um, so, um, those are the things that I think we'll learn, uh, you know, uh, through this process, uh, that I just wanted to bear out in terms of, uh, answering your question. All that said, um, I think the, the basic premise of certainly when it comes to historical data that's already been provided to the Department of Education for which they have all this comparison information is, is a great asset in terms of a communication tool to our community. Um, in terms of the budgeting piece, uh, again, um, you know, we do lots of, we, we don't, I, I don't, and, and probably very few school districts would say, let's take our teacher's salaries of a million dollars at XYZ school and forecast some cola for next year and that's next year's budget. You wouldn't do that. You know that three teachers are retiring, one's going on a full-time leave, you're gonna get a long-term sub, um, and, uh, you've got a bunch of people making step increases and then you have a cola. So it's not simply just in a forecast adding a cola. You'll have an imprecise forecast or an imprecise budget. Um, so that's kind of the, kind of the next level down in terms of budgeting, um, in, in, in the forecasting aspect. So I, I, I'm interested to learn more about that. Um, and, uh, I think it's about levels of precision of forecasting. If you wanna throw some certain factors out there, that, that's easy to do, just with the understanding that it wouldn't have the same level of preciseness for year one forward or year two, it's probably gonna be even less precise.
Thank you. Colleagues, anything further? Dr. McGee.
Are there districts that we could look at that would be displaying the budgeting, uh, tool to the public? Could you recommend one district or two?
Um, so you know what? Um, let me, let me give you my card. And if you send me an email and just remind me.
I'll do that.
I can, cause I don't know off the top of my head.
That's fine.
So something given to a member of the committee becomes part of the public record. So maybe why don't we just get that through?
Okay.
Mr. Collins.
Yeah, okay.
Just so we don't have to have Ms. McCollum enter into the minutes.
Okay.
Um, the other question, this, this company is, is privately held? It is, it is your company or?
Yes, uh, privately held, uh, venture-backed, um, based in, uh, Maynard, uh, Mass, at the old, uh, mill building there.
Hmm. And, and how long have you been in business?
Uh, a couple of years, um, so about two and a half years total. Uh, it was, it was just my, uh, my co-founder for about the first six months or so, kinda building out the product, the platform. Uh, I joined him Jan one last year and, uh, at the time it was two of us. Now we're almost thirty people and a few hundred customers across twenty-some states. We're off to a good start.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, yes. Uh, one quick question, maybe if you could go to the, uh, sort of original screen with the drill downs, uh, cause one of the, the points that is important, of course, when you're looking at historical data, this is the data that each district has. And secondary education rules and so forth. Um, when you're talking about benchmarking comparisons, uh, and, uh, you can drill down to sort of, you know, compare to your comparative, and I think there's some of them say like you're, you're, you're some number out of a total number of school districts.
Yep.
I noticed it was about four hundred and something, some odd school districts that it listed.
Yep.
Uh, but when you drill down to the next level, it was really showed, it listed, you could list them all, showed about three hundred and fifteen, which is typically what we tend to see.
Yep.
Um, is that a discrepancy between traditional districts and charter schools?
Exactly right.
And, and so how to, and so my, my question is, cause that would throw the percentage off, for example, so the, the data's only gonna be as good as, you know, what it is that people are, are seeing.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're typically publishing things relative to, you know, the number of districts that have submitted that, that, who, who fit that model, not comparing ourselves to, to the charter school world as district-to-district comparisons.
Sure.
Um, those are the kinds of things that are gonna be evolving over time as more people are using the product and, and you're, you're refining, um, how it is. I mean, obviously you can grab certain comparison groups and I think that's a very powerful part of this potential tool.
Yep.
Um, but I'm just curious as to how those numbers.
Yep.
Shake out, because some of it's customizable, but some of it's not. People are gonna, everyone's gonna see certain things when they go, when they land on the, on the site.
Yep. Yeah, so, uh, the short answer is, is yes. I think what you're probably referring to is this number here, sort of the.
Yes.
Total ranking right out of four to six districts. So that does include, uh, charter schools.
Right.
Um, and the comparison here though, in terms of, you know, your percentage higher and lower, that's against your peer group, right?
Right.
So that doesn't take into account. So those percentages are.
Right.
You know, that's just math.
So if you could, so if you could go back up to that and where click on that, it says view full list.
Right.
If you click on that and then, uh, I think you can click again to show them all.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it, I think if you scroll down to the bottom, it still only goes to like three fifteen.
That's right. So, uh, this is, uh, this is actually a, uh, when we did software, as you probably know, is a funny thing, right? And so, um, when we did the update today, um, uh, and added projects, there were a bunch of other updates that we did as well. Um, and so basically it shouldn't be showing charter as a comparison there because that data doesn't exist for a lot of the charter schools.
Right.
So that's a bug that we literally also uncovered today. It'll be fixed, you know.
Great.
Shortly.
Cause, cause one of the pieces for us, it's gonna be important is that, you know, we have some longstanding statistics that we provided to the community.
Sure.
Where typically, you know, per pupil spending is one example of it. We're typically in, you know, the X percentile in per pupil expenditures.
Yep.
Um, and that top number, if it's showing that we're X out of four hundred something versus X out of three hundred and fifteen.
Right.
People are gonna say, well, they've always said they were in this percentile, but look, ClearGov says they're really in that percentile.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, the whole purpose of this is to, is to build confidence in our transparency.
Absolutely.
Um, and to make sure that.
And, and we welcome all of that kind of feedback, right? I mean, one of the ways that we've grown as a company is by listening to, you know, what our customers have said and, you know, the projects feature is a great example. Um, that came out of a whole bunch of different conversations with clients over the last couple of years around, hey, we wanna not only be able to communicate the numbers, but what are we doing with this money, right?
Right.
So, you know, absolutely, we, uh, value all of that.
Mm-hmm.
But that particular thing was software bug that popped up today.
Right. Understood. And, and I think the, the other question I have in, in terms of, uh, doing the benchmarking you're talking about when, when districts are choosing to, uh, provide more recent data, uploading current year.
Yep.
Information, uh, that I would, I would assume that's not able to benchmark that through the normal tools because.
Correct.
Not everyone's gonna have that. So that, that'll be clear, I would assume, when, when a, uh, if a citizen clicks on it and is looking at current fiscal year data, um. We benchmark that against someone else's.
That's exactly right. There's, there's, uh, wording in there that's, that essentially says exactly that, that, you know, this is, you know, if you wanna see the peer analysis, you gotta go to two thousand seventeen, cause that's. Um, in the back office, right, you can do, in fact, uh, that was sort of the mistake that I made when I first showed it to you. I had two thousand eighteen and only a handful of districts have given us two thousand eighteen data yet.
Right.
Right? So that's why it didn't show any initial results. So you can do that in the backend, but in the front end, it's all controlled.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I, I too think there's a lot of promise with this. I'm really pleased that Mr. Mizikar, uh, and Mr. Collins have been collaborating on this and obviously to get some grant funding to seed this and be able to work with it in a more detailed way. Um, I know that this, uh, is a, uh, speaks to many of the priorities that the, the committee have expressed to us about the potential for ways to communicate, uh, around financial and, and budget information. Um, so we're excited to, to work with you, uh, in the coming year and, uh, see where this can go. And, uh, uh, again, since, uh, the product's evolving, I, I, you know, obviously it's, it's good to be at a point where we can give feedback around how it might work better for us as we go forward as well. So we appreciate, uh, your time tonight and, uh, I appreciate the, the committee's comments and questions and that will help us as we continue to work, uh, together on, on moving it forward and we'll certainly bring information back to you at different points in the process as we get to know, uh, its use more and, um, be able to share that information with the public as well.
Thank you guys so much.
So thank you very much.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a great evening. The next item on our agenda is also under Finance and Operations. It is an update on the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, that is to say the current fiscal year's budget. Mr. Collins will present us with an update. Mr. Collins.
All right. Uh, boy, I wish I had some infographics for you. I don't. Uh, I have a, a report in your packet, uh, which, uh, gives, uh, status update as of December sixth for the current year budget fiscal nineteen. Um, you know, our total budget, operating budget, appropriated budget from town meeting, uh, just over sixty-four point one million dollars. Um, by the way, while we don't have infographics, we do have the full document on our website if somebody did wanna look at the line item detail. Um, and of that budget, uh, as of December sixth, uh, year-to-date expenditures were just over twenty-three point three million, or thirty-six percent. Uh, we have encumbered, uh, also, uh, either through payroll liability, uh, contract liabilities with transportation or out-of-district tuitions or supplies and equipment, another thirty-seven point five million dollars, or just about another fifty-nine percent. Uh, so our remaining balance at this point, uh, just under three point three million dollars. Um, I would characterize, uh, our status this year as, uh, a very stable budget. Uh, some categories, as I noted in the, in the notes column here, uh, we're running, uh, very close to budgets for, um, uh, many of our payroll accounts with the exception, uh, I'm gonna be forecasting, uh, year-end that will be over budget in our substitutes, day-to-day substitutes. Um, that's both, uh, based upon our, our use, uh, thus far in the school year for day-to-day substitutes. It's also, uh, and we knew this when we made the recommendation to increase the rates to be, uh, equally competitive with our peers, uh, so I think we're gonna be over in, in day-to-day substitutes. Um, we're, I ran a, a bit over on our summer school special education wages category A six, uh, so I'm gonna expect at year-end we'll be over budget there, uh, as we will with, um, employee benefits. While we're not yet, we're gonna be paying, uh, some retirees sick leave, uh, a few more retirees than we expected. Um, and then in, uh, our out-of-district transport, excuse me, out-of-district, uh, special education tuitions, um, and our vocational, uh, tuitions, I expect will be running under budget, uh, so fewer students going out, uh, than projected. Um, and then all of our supply and, and equipment line items at this point, you know, I'd expect people to, those are more discretionary, uh, I'd, I'd expect they'd be fully expending their budgets. So at this point, uh, you know, my, my estimate is that we'd be somewhere between a one and a half and, and two percent surplus at year-end, uh, but, uh, I think we're running stable. I'm happy to answer any kind of detailed questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And I just comment, well, obviously that's a good news story. I know there's year-to-year quite a bit of volatility in our budget and this year it seems we're gonna, going to be fortunate, obviously in previous years, uh, that's not always been the case, so. Uh, colleagues, questions or comments? Seeing none, Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add?
I appreciate the work and, uh, who's been involved and it's, uh, a good news story that we're in a stable position right now.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda tonight is under New Business. It is an educator evaluation agreement with the Shrewsbury Education Association. Uh, this would be a vote to ratify a memorandum of understanding. By way of background, the Shrewsbury Education Association or SCA and the school administration under the committee's authority previously negotiated a contract that would outline educator evaluation process and procedures, uh, that was ratified and went into effect in June of two thousand fifteen. Built into that agreement was the ability to continue to discuss the topic of educator evaluation while many components were being implemented and to incorporate newer changing guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education over time. Uh, at this time, negotiations have been completed to update the supervision and evaluation process with agreed-upon language. The SCA voted in favor of these changes on December fifth of this year. In order for this new language to go into effect, there must be a formal vote from the school committee. Uh, a memo from Ms. Malone and the memorandum of agreement were enclosed in our materials. Uh, Ms. Malone, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just wanted to say that there is no direct budgetary impacts, um, as a result of this negotiation and that the, the, the language is really about how, uh, teachers provide artifacts or evidence of educator work, um, the process for how all educators will solicit feedback from their students, um, ensuring anonymity for educators when providing feedback to administrators and just aligning the whole agreement with newer guidance provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So those are the major categories of it. Um, I'd also just like to thank the people who have participated in this work. Um, Dr. Sawyer, uh, Mr. Bizzidlo, the high school principal, participated as principal representative, um, and Ms. Clouder as well.
Excellent. Colleagues, questions or comments? Dr. Sawyer, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, I recommend that the school committee, uh, vote to ratify it. I think it's a, a common sense agreement. Uh, we appreciate, uh, the, the give and take that we had with the SCA, uh, leadership and negotiators, uh, regarding it and really with the emphasis of how we try to approach supervision and evaluation, that this is not a gotcha kind of approach, uh, to try to catch people or, or, uh, it's really about, uh, professional growth. It's really in, in the, uh, very, very small percentage of the time where we're utilizing this tool around, uh, uh, someone who's not meeting expectations or standards, but rather the vast majority of the time, it's helping people who are already doing an outstanding job do an even better job, um, and, and respecting the, the professionalism in doing so. Um, so in that spirit, uh, we think this all fits with that and, uh, do recommend that you ratify, uh, with a vote this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer.